All right, good evening. Welcome to the City of Bangor's Planning Board Meeting of October 21st, 2025. My name is Reese Perkins. I'm the chairman of the board. It is now seven o'clock in the evening. Other board members in attendance this evening are Michael Bazinet, Ted Brush, Vice Chair Jonathan Boucher is absent this evening unless he shows up in a minute, Tricia Hayes, Ken Hume, Janet Jonas, and alternate member Justin Cartier. So if Jonathan doesn't show up, Justin Cartier would be voting in his spot this evening. Board members are volunteers from the Bangor community. We appreciate their help. City staff members in attendance this evening, welcome back, Anya Collette, Assistant Solicitor Grace Ennis hiding in the back, and planning analyst Matthew Eltiaro. And he's running the video and sound and so forth for us, and we thank them as well for their help. So the agenda this evening includes old business, which would be meeting minutes from the October 7th, 2025 meeting. I would ask board members if they have any comments, concerns, or modifications desired for those meeting minutes. Seeing none, I would... Member Hume has a motion to approve. I have a second. Member Bazinet, I saw a first. Roll call vote, member Bazinet?
Yes.
Member Boucher? I'm sorry, member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume? Member Jonas?
Yes.
Member Cartier?
Yes.
Yes. And the chair votes yes. So unanimous approval of meeting minutes from October 7th of 2025. The second item of old business is adoption of findings for 35 Milford Street Extension. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to approve the adoption of findings as presented. Member Brush?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the findings and decisions for 35 Milford Street Extension.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? It's member Jonas. Thank you. Roll call vote, member Bazinet?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
Member Cartier?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Unanimous approval of the adoption of findings for 35 Milford Street. Thank you for that. That's all the old business we have this evening, so I'll go on to the new business. And just a little introduction for you folks out there. The planning board really has two main roles. The first is that we review amendments to the Land Development Code, which typically includes either changes to zoning districts or changes to text within the code. Our review of these amendments includes adherence to the Comprehensive Plan as well as considering any applicable concerns from the public. Our vote on these items is in the form of a recommendation to the city council, and that would be in the form of an ought to pass or ought not to pass. The city council makes the final decision on zoning changes and zoning amendments. There are three items on the agenda this evening that are those zone changes. Second, the board serves as the regulatory authority for the land development permits, and those commonly called site plan review. However, there are none of those items on the agenda this evening, so I'm just going to skip right by any more information on that. Information on cities' codes and standards in the Comprehensive Plan can be found on the city's website. So the way we'll work the review of each of these new items is the applicant or their representative should come forward to the podium and provide a brief description of the project. Then they should stay at the podium while we consider any questions from the staff and/or from board members. For code amendments, staff may make the presentation. Once the item has been presented, the applicant may be seated, and we will allow time for public comments. So public comments, what we would expect is a person would come to the podium. If somebody's on Zoom, we will allow them to join us by Zoom. And a person should introduce themselves, state if they are a Bangor resident, and if they are in a butter to the property. They should also indicate if they are for or against the proposal and give any backing documentation that they can. It is also helpful if you present your thoughts based upon the city's codes and standards, as I said earlier, or the Comprehensive Plan, because these are the documents that the board uses to make our decisions. All comments and discussions should remain respectful and considerate of all others. Once public comments are completed, we will close that item to public comments. The board will then deliberate on the proposal, and they will use those applicable standards to make a decision. Once your project is reviewed and completed, you are welcome to leave the room. You don't have to stay and suffer through more of those reviews if you don't want to. But we would ask that you be respectfully quiet, because we'll be moving on to other items, and that does disrupt if there's a lot of noise. So with that, the new business tonight includes an amendment to the Land Development Code by changing a parcel of land located at 69 Perry Road at map lot R 28009 from Industry and Service District and Contract Urban Industry District to non-contract Urban Industry District for the entire lot. Said area of land contains approximately 2.17 acres total and is more particularly indicated on a map that we have attached to our packet. The applicant and the owner is Cam D. Development LLC. Do I have an applicant here who wants to come up and give us a presentation? Seeing none, the board has the option to review this without an applicant here. Any thoughts on that from the board members? We don't need a vote, but thoughts are appreciated. Member Bazinet?
I'd recommend we table the item until a representative is here.
Okay.
Okay. I second that motion.
Yeah, it was a recommendation, but do you want to phrase that as a motion or?
I'll move that we consider tabling this item until which time we have a representative
Okay, thank you.
of the property.
And so I have a motion from member Bazinet.
A second.
A second from member Cartier. Before I get to a vote, do we have any other board member comments on this? Member Brush?
Just have a question.
Microphone, please.
Question in the description of this parcel says it's a combination industry, I S and I and S and U I D. How does that work? I mean, there's dimensional controls and permitted uses. Which one takes precedent in a combined zone?
Microphone. Anya?
Sorry, for example. I don't know if you guys are able to see the map I included, but the INS is actually this really small portion in the corner of the property. So most of the properties in...
So the lot is actually divided?
Yeah.
Doesn't show that on the map, not that I saw.
Well, it's hard to tell.
No kidding?
Oh, that one doesn't, but it's kind of hard because they're both gray. But most of the property is in the U I D zone, so that would take precedence. Yeah, wherever the use is located.
Thank you.
Any other board member, questions, comments, staff comments? Any reason we know why the applicant's not here? Yeah, okay, all right, is what it is.
We'll contact them and make sure they're at the...
Well, we need a vote first, so we've got a motion to postpone. And typically, we would postpone until the next meeting, assuming that they want to pursue this. So we have a motion to postpone, and we have a second. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Member Bazinet?
Yes.
Member Boucher, I'm sorry, member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
Member Cartier?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, unanimous postponement of 69 Perry Road. Thank you for that. So we'll go on to the next item, and that is to amend the Land Development Code by changing a portion or a parcel of land located at 1009 Ohio Street at map lot R 23013B from Neighborhood Service District to Government and Institutional Service District. Said area of land contains approximately 0.42 acres total and is more particularly indicated on the map attached heretofore and made part hereof. The applicant is Needlepoint Sanctuary of Maine. The owner is Stephen Prey and Tina Prey. I understand, is the applicant here first off? Yes, you are. Okay, that's why you're familiar to me. Okay, thank you. So I understand there was a concern with a board member, and I think we should handle that first. So if you would, if you would come up to the podium and just introduce yourself and give us some information as to what your concern is, and the board can then take it from there, and we'll go forward.
I have to push a button, everybody.
Doesn't look on at all. Wait, hold on just a minute. Matthew will help you out with that, see if we can get it fixed, what's working. Yep.
All those things plugged in.
Do it.
Sorry about this, folks. We're getting used to new technology. Probably most of you know that this is a new building, not a new building, but an old building with new stuff in it. This room has been completely redone, and we've got a lot of new audio visual stuff, and so it takes us a while to get everything figured out.
It's going to be one bit.
Accessibility to the phone means it can be emailed.
What's that?
An accessible entrance.
Yeah, so it's on the far side. Yep, all the way down at the end of the hall. And there's a ramp on the outside that goes towards the parking lot. Okay, so yeah, you're welcome to check it out. No, that's fine. Thanks for asking. Go ahead.
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. My name is William Hurley. I'm the director of Needlepoint Sanctuary. And the recusal request and question refers to Mr. Cartier. So Justin and I know each other personally, and the last few interactions we had were pretty negative. We shared space at the Unitarian Church. There's some conflicts there, and I feel like as it relates to the particular program that we operate, I know personally that Mr. Cartier is not a fan, so I'm asking that tonight he recuse himself from voting on this matter.
Okay. And so you would describe this as, I mean, you mentioned there were some negative interactions or whatever. Do you believe that he has shown you something that he is prejudging your application that we have in front of us this evening?
I wouldn't say for certain. You know, I want to assume positive attentions from Mr. Cartier. However, beyond the code enforcement issue at hand, there is a political aspect to this, right? So Needlepoint is a syringe service program. Not all community members agree with syringe service programs. Justin has spoken publicly on the record at city council meetings, making false claims about our organization and its operations. I believe that from a political perspective in terms of his personal beliefs, he is opposed to the work that we do, and this has been demonstrated in the public record.
Okay, thank you. So what I would like to do next is, you know, I've got on my list, staff have any comments?
I think probably we want to turn to Assistant Solicitor Grace Ennis and let her speak to this a little bit first.
Yeah, so this would be referred to as a prejudicial bias question. So there are due process concerns with something like this. So an official would be disqualified because of partiality or prejudgment so intense it prevents the official from making a fair and impartial decision. And evidence of this would be statements that were previously made that indicate an official's mind has already been made up about a matter that's before the board. So I actually found a case that's pretty on point with this. So that's Pelkey versus Presk Isle, and it was in 1990. And the facts are very similar. Well, not similar. It was also in front of a planning board in that a board member had previously made statements against a project before they were elected or appointed to the planning board. And then once they were appointed to the planning board, then it came up whether there was a bias or not, and the court determined that there was a bias because they had previously made statements against that project specifically. So that's what I have to say about that.
Okay, Solicitor Ennis, if you could speak too, because the thing I think that is a little tricky here, and I'm not sure, but there may be something in that case that you reviewed. What sort of documentation there might be? Because Mr. Hurley has, I'm sure, good intentions, but we're basically at this point going by his word that he says this has happened. And I will get to member Cartier in a minute, so you'll have a chance. But what sort of evidence would we sort of feel necessary or not necessary in order to make a judgment on this sort of thing?
Yeah, I think that's kind of tough with this one, and I think it's a difficult thing to determine. But, you know, it's asking, this kind of thing would require like very specific and very intense statements against a project or against a zone change request like this one or something along those lines. And so, you know, like you said, you're asking for evidence. I don't know. You would have to know if there had been statements previously made, and we can ask member Cartier about that. We can ask Mr. Hurley about that as well, and just kind of do it like that, I think.
Okay, excellent. Before we do that, let's just, I'd like to have board members speak in first. So, member Hume?
Yeah, Justin can also recuse himself if he chose to.
Correct. Yeah, I'm going to give, just member Cartier, I'm going to give him a chance in just a minute to speak, and that's one of his options, and we'll get to that. Any other board member questions before we ask anything else? So I'm just going to kind of ask you again, just to be, you know, when I think of evidence, I would, if you were, if I was wanting you to convince me that this had happened, I would want you to either like give me something, maybe a recording or, you know, an article in the paper or something that sort of quoted Mr. Cartier saying, you know, he doesn't like you guys, or he doesn't want to see any projects by you guys, or something like that, you know?
It's a matter of public record. I believe it was the August 28th city council meeting. I submitted the document that I submitted beforehand, sites specifically. It's in both the minutes and the recordings, his statements.
Right, and can you say specifically what those statements were that he spoke about that?
Yes, I believe that Justin said that Needlepoint Sanctuary was operating illegally out of the Unitarian Universalist Church and must be stopped or something along those lines.
Okay, all right, thank you. Nothing else to add right at the moment. Okay, okay, so member Cartier, I'd like to give you a chance to just kind of respond and also talk about, you do have options. You have an option to just simply recuse yourself, and, you know, we would let you sit out this one.
I understand what my options are. And even though I've spoken against some of the things that the Needlepoint Sanctuary does, and they were operating illegally out of the building next door to us here, and I feel they're responsible for the death of my friend Riley. Riley and I attended a 12-step program at the church next door at noon time. And normally I wouldn't speak of these things, because anonymity is the spiritual foundation of all our traditions ever place, ever encouraging us to place principles before personalities. However, when a young man received a needle from the Needlepoint Sanctuary and stumbled through our meeting into the bathroom behind the speaker who was chairing that day, they went into the bathroom and used the needle to do their drug of choice, whatever that was. Riley was a young man, 25 years old, new in sobriety. He was attending the Wellsprings Recovery House and was a couple months into recovery. He commented, at the end of that meeting, we had to bang on the door and get that person to check on that person to see if they were okay. And when we helped them out, Riley commented, wow, I miss that feeling. The next day Riley got a needle from the Needlepoint Sanctuary, and a week later he overdosed in the park on Second Street. So yes, I've spoken out against Needlepoint Sanctuary, and I do feel that I could be impartial about this, but I also understand that the perception of bias is something we need to be very careful of. And I see how that can certainly be there today, which is why I am willing to recuse myself so that our people of the Needlepoint Sanctuary feel they can have a fair hearing today.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Appreciate it. That is good for you?
Yeah, it's good for me for now.
Okay. Member Cartier cut me off before I finish, but, yeah, if I could just say this first. Number one, I appreciate your frankness, member Cartier, but also, member Cartier has the right to stay as a member of the public. And so he may do that. It's up to him. It's not up to us. We are recusing him from this board, so he won't be involved in your project on the board. Because it is the last item other than a postponement, if you do leave, you don't feel like you have to stay. But if you want to stay until we get to the last item, like I say, it's simply a postponement. But anyway, you're welcome to come back when we're done with this one in particular.
All right, just to make sure I'm correct, did you have to still vote on whether he's recused?
Yes. Well, no, he's volunteering to recuse, right? So we don't need to vote on it.
They don't need to vote. No, okay, I'm sorry.
Chair?
Member Bazinet?
Previously, I recall when member had to recuse themselves, they had to leave the room. Is that not correct?
Yeah, and so you're right. You're correct. Further purview of the codes, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, so after further review, hello, all the way over here. After further review of like the state laws and FOA and public proceedings, people are allowed to continue to participate as members of the public, but obviously you won't refer to them as board members, and you won't, they won't participate in the discussion and that kind of thing.
Should he move?
He can't stay up here on the deal while we discuss this.
I'm not trying to be nitpicky.
No, 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 I'm glad you asked. You're exactly right. We used to do it that way.
Perception.
Further.
I've dedicated myself.
Yes, yes. Thank you. All right, good. So we accomplished that. So if the applicant would present the project to us in brief form, of course, we've got the information in our package, just so that we kind of know what your plan is, what you're trying to do. And then we will take it from there. I'm sorry.
Just a point of order. Do we need to advise them that they do have the ability to postpone if they desire, because we do not have a full board? Are we good?
You're correct. Thank you. Member Jonas brings up another good sticky point that she's completely right about, and I didn't pick up on it. But by having member Cartier not on the board this evening, that leaves us with six board members. Our code says you have the right, if you wanted to have what would be considered a full board, which is seven members, that you have the right to postpone until another time for us to review your project. So you actually have that right. So I need you to say that it's okay for us to proceed with six members.
Appreciate that, but it's okay for us to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, so carry on with your presentation, and then we'll kind of get from there.
So I'll preface this by saying that I am certainly not a planning board material. My brain does not work that way.
Okay.
And if I was, we would have rented a different space and not run into this issue at all. Our intentions for that space are to create a recovery and harm reduction community center. And what this is, it's a space where people can access resources, whether they're in active substance use or whether they're in recovery, right? So recovery meetings, Alcoholics Anonymous meetings, Narcotics Anonymous meetings, all recovery meetings, different support meetings, similar to what they do at Together Place and The Barn, and then three times a week to operate it as a harm reduction center. And what that is, is similar to Health Equity Alliance, which closed last spring, I believe, and Wabanaki Public Health and Wellness. People experiencing active substance use can access clean sterile supplies to stay safe, to minimize the risk of disease, to reduce their risk for overdose. And I do want to briefly speak to Riley, because Riley was my friend as well. And I don't want to belabor it as any sort of argument between Mr. Cartier and I, but just share my perspective. So I first met Riley in Pickering Square in 2019. I think he was 18 or 19 years old at that time, and he was in active substance use. And what we used to do in Pickering Square is we did street outreach. And for those of you unfamiliar with the history of Needlepoint Sanctuary, it was born right here in Bangor. And what it was is a bunch of young citizens who were furious, upset, and very concerned about the overdose crisis, which took 800 lives that year. And so what we did is we took to the streets and we started distributing naloxone, the overdose prevention drug. So I got to encounter Riley many times throughout that process. And Riley is one of hundreds of community members who, when they are in active use, utilize our services to stay safe. I didn't see Riley again for several years, and when I did see him, it was wonderful to reconnect to them. I actually saw him at that same AA meeting. He was healthy. He put on a little bit of weight. I barely recognized him, right? He was like this like 19-year-old street kid who weighed probably like 100 pounds soaking wet. And myself, I'm in recovery, and part of my experience with recovery, living in sober living, is I have seen many young men and women in recovery tragically relapse and die. It's this kind of, it is an irony of the current landscape that we're in, that one of the greatest risk periods for you as a person in recovery, especially if you use opiates, is when you relapse, right? Because when you're using opiates every day, you have a very high tolerance for opiates. And you lose that when you're in recovery. And a good way of understanding harm reduction is to imagine that active substance use is this terrifying, roiling ocean, right? And imagine that recovery is this ship, right? This lifeboat that people can get on to safety. Harm reduction is a life preserver, and its intention is for people who are not ready to enter recovery to stay safe, and then for those who leave recovery and return to absence use, which over 90% of substance users do. So you can throw it to them, and you can keep them alive. And it broke my heart when Riley passed, because when Riley passed, our Pickering Square exchange that we'd operated for four years had been shut down, and we were no longer allowed to operate. And Riley was someone who used to come to that exchange every day. And I think that if he'd been able to access our services, which he was unable to do at the church, because we don't do syringe services from the church, and at the time we were only doing community events and like outreach services, like packing up and going out to the encampment at that time, actually, he might still be alive. But these hypotheticals don't diminish the tragedy of things like that. And, you know, I've got 100 different stories like that, friends and loved ones who, it's always the what if when they passed. But our intention for this space is to be a sanctuary for people in recovery, for people in active use, to meet the needs of this community amidst Maine's largest HIV outbreak in history, where the case count continues to grow every single day. Syringe service programs can be a politically difficult issue. There's clearly... Syringe service programs can be a politically difficult issue, there's clearly divisions when it comes to it, and when it comes to substance use disorder in particular, it is something fraught with trauma and emotion and all sorts of just difficult feelings, right? But our intention is to serve, and what Bangor has at Ohio Street right now is a space that can be opened as soon as this decision is made and confirmed by the city council that can immediately start addressing the HIV outbreak, the ongoing overdose crisis, that can immediately start providing recovery meetings, that can operate as a day center, a warming center for the unhoused community. And in terms of why we picked Ohio Street, we did so because when you have these services downtown, it can cause a lot of tension, right? You have local business owners who don't like unhoused community members loitering near their property, you have concerns around syringe waste. So we picked this location, and we were able to, you know, with the blessing of the praise, open the center up for a week in July before we found out it was zoned improperly. And in terms of any questions about like the zoning specifics and the comprehensive plan, I'm gonna let you guys ask questions, I'm gonna do my best to answer with referring back to the start of this little speech here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your presentation. Comments from the staff before we go any further?
The only thing I would say is just read or read what was in the memo, which is, you know, when you're considering a zone change, look at the potential uses in the zone rather than just what's proposed, and look at whether that, you think that aligns with the comprehensive plan.
Yep.
Let's start from there.
Good, thank you. Board member questions, the applicant, member whom? Microphone?
Thank you. We all need reminders. Yeah, I've got a little over 50 years of healthcare and experience, none of it in addiction. So my question is, is that would you describe yourself as, your program is chemical dependency treatment?
No, no, it is not a chemical dependency treatment facility, and we discussed this with code enforcement pretty extensively, trying to determine like which specific designation our program falls under, and it falls under a community-based organization. There's no dispensing of medications, there's no doctors prescribing anything, it's not a detox facility, so no.
And the reason, this is not a tricky, a trick question, the reason I ask you that is because the zone that you want to change to excludes chemical dependency treatment. I just wanted to make sure that you're, that that was part of the whole deal.
No, absolutely, we're clear on that.
I just wanted to clarify that. Member Hume, I'm not sure if you read all the way down, because it threw me for a bit of a loop as well. Yeah, I can't find it real quickly, but in essence, if you look further down where the, where the information is on changing it. A chemical dependency program, as you say, is first excluded, but if you look like four parts down in that same paragraph, it said it can be in this location.
As long as it's on arterial street.
As long as it's on arterial street. Is, yeah.
Where do you see that?
Thank you. I knew it was in there somewhere, I just couldn't find it. I read it. Okay, okay. Any other board member questions, comments? Yes, Member Brush.
Question. I believe you desire this zone change in order that you could build this facility, because it's such a use as permitted in a government institutional service district. However, that's a very common district. Have you looked at other locations that would not require a zone change? They're throughout the city.
We have looked at other locations. We've actually been on quite the Odyssey the last couple of years. So the way the certification process for syringe service programs works is you get certified through the state, and then the municipality can essentially make laws dictating that. And Bangor is a far more supportive municipality than many in the state. There are some municipalities that have outright tried to ban syringe service programs or have banned syringe service programs. We initially got certified for what are called mobile sites. So we historically operated at Pickering Square, and we had a spot by the library, and for four years, we were at the Hope House Encampment. And so we got certified for three of those locations, and the city asked us not to do services downtown in Pickering Square and in Pierce Park, and we agreed, because we want to work with the city to try to find a location. And it's kind of, it was this back and forth for a long time. We looked at several leases in other places. The reason we chose, so if you look at this building, I'm not sure if you guys have driven by it, but it's basically gas station and then the building, right? And there's some residential properties kind of further back. I'm not even sure if there's any residential spaces that abut the property, there might be one. And it's a standalone building, and that's really what we had to find, right? And so we jumped at it, because we had a landlord that was receptive to it. We looked at places downtown, there's a spot right next to Angelo's Pizzeria. Angelo's Pizzeria respectfully doesn't want, you know, 30 to 40, often homeless in the midst of sometimes chaotic substance use coming in right next door, right? So it's been challenging to find a space, and so when we found the Ohio Street location, we were very excited.
Okay, seeing no more board member questions, I'll ask you, Mr. Hurley, to be seated. I'll take public questions next, and then we'll go from there. So I'm gonna open this up to the public. I'll take folks in the room first, and then we'll see, it doesn't look like anyone's on Zoom currently, or maybe there is. No, I see one, just one, and there's a hand raised. It is, okay, so we'll skip that. Is anyone in the room want to come up and speak about this? Yes, ma'am? Remember to introduce yourself, if you're a Bangor resident and an abutter or not, and please let us know how you feel.
Hi, this is working? Okay.
I think so, yeah.
Good evening, my name is Amy Clark. I am a Bangor resident, and for close to a decade now, I have been spending time working with people in recovery, people who use drugs, and their family members. I also live less than half a mile from here, right on Union Street, and I work downtown. So this all gives me a pretty good perspective and understanding of how the opioid crisis has hit Bangor. And I'm here today to offer support to my friends at Needlepoint Sanctuary. The 2022 Bangor Comprehensive Plan makes clear that zoning should evolve to meet community needs. It calls on us to quote, "improve access to social and health services for all residents", and to quote, "strengthen partnerships with organizations addressing substance use and public health challenges." This zone change does exactly that and aligns with the city's stated goals. I know that some people who haven't done the research worry that harm reduction enables addiction and makes things worse, and perhaps doesn't benefit public health. I used to actually believe that too, but that couldn't be further from the truth. What it really enables is survival. It enables human connection, it enables the possibility of recovery. People can't recover if they're dead. Stigma has already done enough damage in this town. It has cost lives, torn families apart, and has made too many people feel like they have nowhere to turn. I've seen it, how it keeps people sick and isolated. We can do better than that. Programs like Needlepoint Sanctuary are how we do better. They're not enabling, they're engaging. They meet people with that and keep them safe until they can take the next step. Excuse me. According to both the CDC and the National Health Institute, sorry, I'm losing myself, National Institutes of Health, syringe service programs do not increase crime or drug use, but they do reduce HIV and hepatitis transmission by up to 50%. And syringe service providers are among the largest distributors of naloxone, often known as Narcan, saving lives that might otherwise be lost to overdose. In addition, people who engage with harm reduction programs are five times more likely to enter recovery than those who don't. Five times. This isn't abstract, this is Bangor. Our city is facing an HIV outbreak directly linked to injection drug use, and Maine has some of the highest hepatitis C rates in the nation. These are preventable illnesses, and the work of Needle, the work that Needlepoint Sanctuary does every day helps to prevent them. If Bangor really wants to take the crisis seriously, we have to support every part of the solution, not just the ones that feel comfortable. This zoning change aligns with our city's comprehensive plan, our values, and our shared responsibility to one another. It represents Bangor choosing to confront this crisis together with compassion, evidence, and hope. The opioid epidemic impacts every corner of our community, and if we want real progress, we can't let stigma decide which services we support. We need them all because they work best together. Thank you for listening and recognizing the health and future of the city depend on how we show up for one another.
Thank you. Who's next? I think she's, yep.
Hi there. My name is Grace Nichols, I live in Augusta, Maine. And the reason I wanted to speak with you is because I'm a lifetime member of New York Act Up, and one of the reasons is because when I was a homeless teen in the early 80s, we were speaking of the gay cancer, and we didn't know what was happening. And there was a lot of stigma at that time, kids were being thrown out of the home for being gay, just as a matter of course. And so, while I was lucky enough to live in a collective and put out newspapers and stuff until I went to college, other people were in really desperate situations, and we knew a lot of them. And at that time, we knew that unsafe sex was a problem, but we didn't yet know about needle transmission, which is the most efficient transmission for HIV and Hep C. And people died like flies, so I lost a lot of friends. And I think I stand with the entire Greenwich Village area and the Lower East Side to say that we all feel this kind of survivor guilt, we all have scars from that time period because we were ground zero, and people just died, all over the gay male community and all over the squats that lived on the Lower East Side, and in communities of hippies, and people who strayed into drug use, and people who had sex with people who had strayed into drug use, and they all died. So I don't want to see Bangor go through this. If you let an HIV epidemic go through stigma and concern about the fact of drug use, and look, 93,000 people now, it's down slightly, 93,000 people a year die of opioid overdoses in this country. So this isn't a moral problem, it is a national problem, right? And it's linked to trauma, it's linked to poverty, it's linked to the saturation of our society with substances. So in this situation, if we fail to deal with the most efficient form of transmission of HIV to people who are hiding, people, I mean, right now, I'm working as a mental health worker here in Bangor, the crisis stabilization unit is full, like there's no place for people to go who are in crisis. So if people are hiding, and people are sharing needles, and people are trying to, are like failing to get tested, and the CDC doesn't know how many people are out there, and then they're getting TB, which anybody can get from them, and then they're getting PCP, and then they're getting everything. You're gonna have a public health crisis that we are not prepared for. We are so overloaded in our health system already. In the mental health clinic, I'm seeing people released from the hospital with physical illnesses untreated because there's just no providers. And so in this situation, it is crucial that we find a way to zone the thing that works. Now, just one more thing, Housing Works, which is one of the most successful AIDS programs in Greenwich Village, and they're huge housing for people with HIV, so they're preventing homelessness, and they're providing long-term stabilization for people with HIV. They actually have a harm reduction within their housing complex in Greenwich Village, in the middle of like, you know, people spending thousands of dollars on paintings and stuff, you have Housing Works and you have a harm reduction. So it's not true that you can't have multi-use, and it is true that this is a crisis, we have to zone it. And I just want to encourage you, I know it's hard, it's a horrible situation to be in, we hope that we find lots of different solutions, but this is one important solution. So thank you so much.
Thank you. This woman, yeah, over here.
Thank you, thank you so much, I'll keep my remarks brief. I'm Caitlin Bailey, I live just outside downtown in Bangor, Maine, and as a person who lives there, I am intimately familiar with the opioid crisis and all the folks in town who are dealing with this, you know, really terrible problem. And I've also seen the wonderful work that Needlepoint Sanctuary does. So personally, as a public health researcher, I am here to encourage you to approve the zoning change. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sam Morse, I'm a Bangor resident, and I just wanted to speak to Needlepoint Sanctuary and to the planning board on this topic. I had an opportunity to volunteer at a warming shelter last winter, and seeing Willie and his team, you know, reach out and be, you know, resource for the community, it was pretty amazing to see. And, you know, it's hard to, you know, give humanity to, you know, people at their lowest, but sometimes that's what, you know, people need is compassion and that kind of thing. And I think harm reduction is good first step. Obviously, we'd love to see more people in recovery, but I can't say, you know, how impressed I was with Needlepoint and their handling of this community and their reach out, so that's.
Thank you. Anyone else? Justin?
Thank you, I'm not going to speak out against this.
If you would just introduce yourself.
My name's Justin Cartier, a resident of Bangor. I'm not going to speak out against this, but I do want to point out that one of the allowed uses may be a chemical dependency treatment facility, provided it's located on a major arterial street, as we've established it has been, has a curb cut. That is something you need to investigate, because this property does not have that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm a resident of Bangor, and my name's Mac Thompson. This summer, I began volunteering with Needlepoint Sanctuary, and I have witnessed how their involvement in the community has impacted those that they work with and provide services for. This care and compassion is a valuable tool when providing harm reduction, and due to the closure of their Ohio Street location, Bangor and the greater area has lost access to important services. By stripping access to clean syringes and many other services that they provide, we have seen a rise in HIV cases in Bangor. Tonight, I ask you to have the same compassion and care for your community as Needlepoint Sanctuary staff and volunteers have by reinstating Needlepoint Sanctuary's zoning for their Ohio Street location. Thank you.
Hello there, my name is Luke Sicara Flanders, I live and work in Bangor. First, I don't know if this is against the rules, but if I could just clarify a point that was made in earlier comment, just as was stated earlier, we're not a chemical dependency treatment facility, so maybe that earlier point might. treatment facility, so maybe that earlier point might not be of particular concern. But anyways, as someone who lives and works in Bangor, I started working, or I started volunteering with Needlepoint Sanctuary almost coming on three years ago now in an emergency warming shelter, and I have now been working for Needlepoint Sanctuary for a year and a half. I have seen firsthand some incredible transformation that we've been able to help people through in terms of accessing recovery services. You know, I think it's really worth reinforcing that the center we're opening is, as much as it is a harm reduction center, it is also a recovery center. And not just because of the fact that we are hosting recovery groups, but also because we are, you know, in, through our syringe service program, through all of the services we provide, we are trying to build people up to a point where they feel ready to meaningfully improve their lives. We define recovery as any positive change, and whether that is as simple as getting someone to go to the doctor for a wound or an infection they may have, it's about building a sense of self-worth in people, where often what we see with people who have substance use disorder, who are experiencing homelessness, we see deep-seated depression, self-loathing, trauma. And the biggest antidote to that is showing consistent, determined, principled compassion for people. And that, every interaction we have, every time we interact with somebody, that's what we try to offer a person. We try to offer compassion and, you know, see the inherent value that they have that they might not be able to see themselves because life has been so difficult for them. And, you know, syringe service programs, it's often the case that people are coming through our doors to access our services because they need syringes, where they might not otherwise access any public health services. There are many people where a syringe service program is the only public health service they may be accessing. And so we take that as a sacred responsibility, where we are, you know, reaching people who are in the depths of chaotic drug use and who are the farthest from accessing these other critical health services and connecting them to those services so that they might not only survive but also meaningfully improve their lives further down the road. So I just wanted to offer that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay. I can't tell. My name is Jaya Tividiya. I am of the Greater Bangor area, but I do not live in Bangor. I volunteer with Needlepoint Sanctuary. I volunteer with the Greater Bangor Houseless Coalition. I have volunteered with Dignity First. These are all Bangor organizations, so I'm very involved in the area because this is a metropolitan center for all of us around. And I can give you a thousand statistics on HIV because I have researched it thoroughly, but since we've had a great number of people come up here and give a statistical perspective, I want to give a personal perspective. And that is that I started volunteering with Needlepoint Sanctuary in April of 2024 to gain a better understanding of substance dependency in my own family. And Needlepoint Sanctuary connected me with tools and gave me education around harm reduction that ultimately, the Narcan I received from Needlepoint Sanctuary in December of 2024 saved my brother's life four times, and at this point, my brother is no longer using so, and hasn't used since December of 2024. And so that's just to say that these tools, these resources for harm reduction not only save people's lives, but it'll give them the opportunity to change their lives. And that's exactly what happened for my brother. And I believe that that can happen for people over and over again. So I would love if this committee could honor the request by, that's hugely supported by the community, to change the zoning and allow Needlepoint Sanctuary to provide syringe services that are literally life-saving, not only for preventing infectious diseases like HIV, but also that give people the opportunity to change their lives. And that's all I have to say, and I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Jessie Archbold. I live here in Bangor, and I am a certified intentional peer support specialist for Needlepoint Sanctuary. A lot of what, well, I don't know if any of you are familiar with what that program looks like to get that certification, but the qualifications are that you are somebody with lived experience of mental health struggles and/or substance use disorder, so that's been my journey, and I am in recovery now. I, a lot of the way my role is used is to provide some sort of emotional support within like those conversations and those like personal elements and the things that can only really be explained between people who have had shared experiences. And I use a lot of that trust to get them engaging in other forms of care. So I work with a lot of other care coordination teams, whether it be Amy West's office at PCHC attached to the Hope House, Ellen Tarashi from Maine Family Planning. I've been interacting more with Bangor Public Health and just a multitude of different organizations, building the relationships with the individuals who are doing different parts and pieces of this work. And that way, I can provide those warm handoffs that get people accessing other services than just our own, and sometimes even, you know, going there with them because sometimes taking those steps are hard and it's intimidating. And I have, you know, had some really awesome experiences with people moving on to better things. We've had 20 people go into detox this year. I've personally gone out of my way to take people, if it even takes going to a different town, to get them in. I really love and care for this community. I work tirelessly to support them, and I guess I hold a little bit more of the emotional piece to all of this, which I hope you'll consider as a multifaceted of our harm reduction organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Former resident of Bangor, grew up in Brewer, Bangor, and I had a chance to work in the HIV community in Arizona as a Brian White case manager and prevention specialist. And having clean needles is really a very important piece of not passing on hepatitis C, HIV, other viruses that can really cost the community a lot of money, not just money, but also in the loss of people that have great strengths and abilities. And, you know, one of the things that I've seen at Needlepoint and at Health Tech Alliance, where I volunteered 2018 to 2024, 2023, was the trust building that takes place. If, you know, I can't imagine being a person that has a big, heavy stigma over them and the community because of the way they take in their substance to feel good. And folks break down the barrier of that challenge at Needlepoint. And just to give you an idea of the financial cost, 30 people, well, 29, I think is the number now, that have, there's probably going to be more. And the last I looked, I tried to do a little research for this meeting, for each individual for their medications, about $30,000 a year, you know, I think I would be comfortable putting that out there. Right now, only about 14 or 15 folks are engaged in case management of this new outbreak, and that's very concerning. Because it does cost, again, the cost of people's lives is tremendous, but there's an opportunity to prevent the amount of money that's going, you know, over 10 years, it's going to be $9 million to help that 30 folks, people to get what they need to survive and have a great life. If we could get them before that situation happens, that would be wonderful. And Needlepoint's in the perfect opportunity and have the expertise and they have the love in their heart to do that work. So I would really, I would strongly encourage the board to allow this situation to go forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, sorry I was late. My name's Ellen Tarashi. I'm a nurse practitioner working very closely with Needlepoint for the HIV outbreak. I just want to speak to everything they're already doing. We're doing a tremendous amount, trying to identify cases, prevent new cases from happening, but it's very difficult with the tools that we have, which is notably not a syringe exchange. So that's a huge component of stopping cases from happening. We've identified six new cases in about the past month, and that's just from people we see regularly. Like, we're missing so many people. So many people need to be tested. There's just an entire population of folks that we need to be seeing that we're not. And one of the really great things about Needlepoint's brick and mortar, when they were open for like a week, people were coming in kind of out of the woodwork, in their cars, from their homes. We're seeing people who, as of now, we're missing and who need to be tested and perhaps treated for HIV. So it cannot be overstated how important it is to have a meeting place for these folks to gather, get the supplies they need to stay safe, and also to receive medical care. I probably had about five visits with folks for STI treatment, wound care, just in like four days they were open. So it was clearly a place with so much potential to be a source of not only syringe exchange but medical care, community. People would stop by to have a warm meal, sit on the couch, you know, just have a place to relax. And so it would do so much more for the community than just keep us safe, which is already a huge benefit. But it's so, so, so crucial that we have a syringe exchange, not only just a syringe exchange, but a syringe exchange run by folks that people trust and that people want to interact with, because it takes a lot to build these relationships, and that's not something that can happen overnight. So they're in the perfect place to run this organization and run this syringe exchange, and I really hope that y'all will support their efforts. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Abby Collins. I'm a resident of Ordo. I started volunteering with Needlepoint a little over a year ago, and I am now the intern there. I have been so honored to be a part of the great work that they do, and I'm just coming up here to basically say ditto to what everyone else said. Harm reduction and clean using supplies are essential in dealing with the HIV outbreak and the opioid crisis, but more importantly, it's essential to taking care of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a couple of people that have been waiting on Zoom for a little bit, so let's go to Zach Campbell.
Hi there, Zach Campbell. I wish I could turn on my camera, but I am one of the co-founders and I'm currently the board president of Needlepoint Sanctuary. I would strongly encourage the board to approve the change in zoning. I think it's a really good location. It's not super close to residential areas. I think it would prove beneficial for the gas station right there increasing business. It's also right along the bus line, and it's outside of downtown Bangor, so I think it's just a really good place to have a syringe service program. So I'll be brief with my comments, but I think it just makes a lot of sense. I don't really see any arguments against it, and I hope that you'll consider approving the change in zoning. Thanks.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go to Richard Ward.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yes. Yep, Bangor resident, city council candidate. I can't support a program that's based on handing out needles for drug use. I find it ridiculous that I hear people saying needles will lift people from depression and better their lives. Has anyone ever thought about going out and talking to drug-addicted people and being there to comfort and listen to their thoughts? Has anyone ever considered telling them that they matter and that Jesus Christ can lift them out of whatever problems they are facing? As I go to church, I hear a lot of stories of people overcoming drug addiction with the power of prayer, knowing that a higher power exists that loves them. And I think that going out and talking to people is really what's going to lift people out of their problems. I think that, you know, hugging a homeless person or a drug-addicted person matters a lot more than giving somebody a boofing kit or giving them free needles. I don't think needles is really the solution to the problem. I think it's just kind of a Band-Aid. It's, as a friend, kind of, I was talking, it's like going to somebody that has a loaded magazine and giving them the gun to use it. I think that giving somebody needles is just giving them the ability to inject harmful things into their body, and I think we can all acknowledge that drug addiction and using drugs is not the thing that we should be supporting. So I'd really like to see the city and other people, instead of going out and giving out needles, to focus that time on actually talking to people and trying to give them a reason to live and give them a purpose in life. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. And it looks like we have one more. Justin Berry? Yes, go ahead, Justin.
I'm going to be honest, I can't believe some of the things I'm hearing here tonight. All these substances that people are going to be using and putting into those needles are very dangerous. At any time, could be somebody's last time injecting something into them. And you guys are patting yourselves on the back for providing a needle for someone to basically inject themselves? And everybody, I just can't believe what I'm hearing. I'm sorry, I'm not really good at speaking like this. I just couldn't believe what I'm hearing. You guys are all sitting there patting yourselves on the back like you're doing this great social justice warrior cause of providing all these needles to people that they're going to end up tossing out on the side of the street. And basically, the stuff that they're doing is dangerous to themselves. If there was a person at home in crisis threatening to harm themselves and the cops showed up, they would end up getting blue papered or put in somewhere where they could be monitored by doctors and other people to make sure that they become safe. But then we're just going to walk around and allow people to use drugs out into the street and provide needles for them at the taxpayer's expense. You're all a bunch of fucking retarded liberal-
Hey, that's enough. That's enough. Thank you. As I said earlier, I'm not sure we have anyone else to speak, but as I said earlier, you know, we want comments to stay respectful here, and we're not going to have that kind of thing. So I don't see anyone else on Zoom. I feel like, yes, ma'am, you can go ahead.
Hello, my name's Michelle Osterman. I live in Pittsfield, but I work in Bangor. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just have to say something. In the last couple of years, I'm a woman in recovery for 13 years, and I started out in seeing heal and what that was like, and I was somebody that did not believe in needle exchange. I didn't understand it. I didn't feel like it was good to do that. And then I also got in contact with Needlepoint Sanctuary and being able to be there and be around and see the individuals. I'm somebody that's in the community everywhere in Penobscot and Piscatawess County, and there are many individuals that hang out at Needlepoint Sanctuary that do not feel comfortable to talk to me anywhere else. They feel judged, they feel uncomfortable, they don't feel like they can be themselves, they don't feel as though that they have a right to say anything. They're treated like human beings, right, which they are. And I think that's a beautiful thing, and it's awesome to see harm reduction working to its fullest. We say we believe in harm reduction, we have to believe it in what it looks like in its fullest, and I just think that that's important. A lot of people have said a lot of things tonight, but I just wanted to add that as somebody that's changed my mind on what that looks like and someone that is in recovery- as somebody that's changed my mind on what that looks like and someone that is in recovery and that has had my own struggles, that I do believe we need to be able to meet people where they're at. We need to have them at a place where they can feel comfortable, judge-free, so that individuals like myself can provide resources to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else raising their hand, I'm gonna close the public discussion at this point. And, uh, any further comments or discussion from board members before we go to a vote on this one? Member Jonas, I see your hand first.
Planning on bringing up, so go ahead.
Maybe, maybe, maybe-
Mike and I did our research over here and if this place has a, has a driveway, it's a curb cut.
Yeah, well, okay, so is, was that your concern as well?
Um, yeah, I brought it up. I mean, it's, there's a zero step transition to this property.
Yeah, I read that as well and I get, uh, Mr. Cartier's point. Um, but I think the point in the code seems to be that there be a separate entrance for this facility, which as far as I can tell, and I've driven by this a hundred times, it seems like there is. Um, and I, I would suspect if, uh, code enforcement needed you to put a curb cut in in order to make this property work, you'd find some way to do it. Okay, thank you.
There's no curbing.
Yeah, there's no curb to cut. Uh, that's why I say we leave it up to code enforcement, but I'm sure it could be worked on. Um, any other questions, comments? You have a green light on. Okay. Um, so at this point, um, I would look for a motion on the proposal and typically we would, uh, have that as an ought to pass motion, whether you feel for or against the, uh, item. Anyone like to create a motion on this one? Member Hume?
Yeah, I, I moved that, um, uh, the board, um, is this, this is a, we're approving-
Ought to pass.
Uh, a recommendation ought to pass.
Correct.
Did we, um, make a recommendation to city council ought to pass, um, as presented?
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Jonas, thank you. Roll call vote. Member Bazna?
Yes.
Member Brush?
This is a really tough one. I, I'm gonna have to vote no because, uh, I see it as, as spot zoning. And I, I do think they should find another location where it doesn't require a zone change. And I believe there are probably plenty of opportunities in Bangor for that.
Thank you. Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, yes, one, no. Uh, so the motion has passed this evening. It's an ought to pass to the city council, as you know. The next step is it goes to the city council, uh, for the city council to overturn an ought to pa- an ought to pass that, um, we have presented to them, they have to have a, uh, uh, sixty percent, it's two-thirds majority to overturn. Okay? I know it was, uh, probably a little nerve wracking for some of you folks coming in tonight. Um, you don't normally speak in front of a group of people. We look intimidating up here, but we're just regular folks too. Appreciate your work tonight. And, uh, again, if you would, if you guys leave, if you would just be a little bit quiet as you go out so that we can, uh, finish up our business. Thank you. Member Cartier? So the last new business, uh, this evening, uh, is really not, uh, gonna happen because, um, we did not give adequate advertising time, as I understand, for this, this project to be considered this evening. So it will be considered at a later meeting. So, um, I would look for a motion, uh, to postpone, um, the item. It is, uh, an item to amend the land development code to allow the city departments to review projects requiring stormwater law permits. And I would look for a motion to postpone. Member Hume?
Move to postpone?
Second from Member Hayes. Thank you. Roll call vote. Um, I'm sorry.
Did you state the date in the, did you state you were postponing to November 18th?
I did not. I just said to a later meeting.
Okay.
Um, you would like a date?
That's the suggested one. Um, in general, you do have to state a specific date though, so.
Okay, so the suggested one was the next meeting?
November 18th.
November 18th. Okay, excellent. Uh, Member Hume, would you-
Move to postpone to November 18th.
Excellent. Thank you. A second on that? Yes. So we've got a motion and a second corrected. Yes, Member Brush?
Are we having a meeting on this, on, uh, on November 5th?
Correct. I'll get to that in a minute. Yep.
You are, there still wouldn't be enough time to send in-
Sorry, thank you.
Yep. Yep, good, good questions. Um, so I have a motion and a second on a postponement of the third item of new business. Roll call vote. Member Bazna?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
Member Cartier?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we have postponed that third item until November 18th. So, um, other business, um, Anya's just found herself back in, back, back in the mess again. Um, so I'm not putting any pressure on you to, uh, you know, we have that standing item for thoughts on the land development code. I don't know if you got to see any of the other meetings that we had. Um, we did discuss. And, uh, Director Krieg may have mentioned to you, we did discuss the Broadway corridor a little bit at one meeting because, uh, just the concern, you know, that traffic was going to be a problem and more growth that's happening out there. Um, that was the last thing I think we talked about. Do you have anything else this evening or anything you want to add beyond that?
Um, I don't. Uh, good to be back. So, yeah.
Good to have you.
Thanks.
Um, so yes, so just to confirm what Member Brush brought up is that, um, we have moved what would be typically the next meeting because it was going to be on voting day, November 4th, is now on November 5th. I think, uh, Matthew, if you could just correct, but we, did we hear from everyone that? And you know now that because of where the, uh, swearing in is going to be, uh, Member Cartier and myself are available for that meeting as well, one way or the other. Um, so, um, we've taken care of that. Um, we don't have anything to sign this evening?
Yes.
We do. Okay. So before you leave, let's make sure we sign the papers, please. Does anyone else have anything else? Good job tonight. Thank you, Member Cartier, for, for your professionalism.